Okay, good evening. Dyson Historical Commission meeting on February 20th. And time is 6:06. This meeting is being recorded to be shown later on Dyson YouTube channel. And the listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Okay, and we have a full board here tonight. Yay, wonderful. And we'll do the pledge of allegiance. All right, the secretary's report. On January 9th. There was that, just that one change that Pat pointed out with.
Richmond trip.
Richmond trip instead of Richmond Perry. So with that amendment. I entertain motion to approve the minutes of January 9th to 2024 as amended.
So move.
There are second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. And then we have the minutes from our special meeting on January 25th, 2024. Are there any amendments or changes to that? Okay.
What did I say? It was perfect.
Yes, you did. That's because when I got home, I was like so wired, I just sat down and.
I was too.
Yeah. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 25th, 2024 as submitted.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And those are accepted. Thank you. Okay, the budget. So our FY24, I have a tale to tell.
Oh, boy.
We had a bill from CAI Technologies for $383.75. So I'd asked Rafa or Pat to sign it figuring that the bulk of that could come out of our encumbrance and the rest out of our professional and technical. But lo and behold. The bill is actually cannot come out of the encumbrance because it is for FY24, not FY23. So it has to come out of our professional and technical budget. So when I was looking back at it, I was like, how did this happen? Because I know that we had talked about that for FY23. But because the project got pushed back and delayed, it all happened towards the end of the fiscal year and the contract was written for July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. So it has to come out of this year's budget. Now we understand, I said to Serena, because I did talk with her. But it's also part of the same project, but it's all the dates and how they're dated. So we have that expense. So that will take our budget down to, we had $962.84. It'll take it down to $579.09.
So there's a current balance right there.
Yeah, that's the current balance. Five seventy-nine oh nine. But we still have money, you know, for the rest of the year. We'll be able to get closer to zero out to prove that we can spend our money.
That's a good problem to have.
It is. But I think we'll be okay. Because there are no conferences coming up. I know there's one in June at Fort Devens. That one tends to be more historical society related and I'm not sure what their theme is going to be yet. So, but anyway.
I've been there before, for work, I worked in, when I was traveling, I stayed at a hotel that's on that property.
That's where I just stayed for a conference. It's.
One of those like a Madison typical chain kind of thing, but I remember when I drove in, I.
Like right across.
I like Google with Fort Devens, I'm like, Devon's Mass is not a town. I couldn't find it. And then when I drove in, it was like this like stone gate and I was like, am I at a prison? And I looked at the history since then, a lot about that, it's really cool.
Yeah, I was just there. All right, so does anyone have any questions on that? So lesson learned, we have to pay attention to dates on contracts and encumbered funds. The FY25 budget has been submitted. I sent the town administrator and accountant our technology related issue that Zach had worked on about storage and preservation of the audio, video and text files.
I did talk a lot about that with him today, which I'll get to, but yeah.
I may not, we may not have to meet with Mike because we're not asking for any increases. So on FY25 budget. Okay. Unfinished business, time capsule, Rafa and Zach, do you have anything new?
No, no, only because I, this Somerset Historical Society building hours are very odd. They say like Thursday nights for like four to six or something like that. And then Sunday, Saturday mornings. Two weeks in a row, I went there during the night, the other day, no one was there. And I thought maybe that's an only hours like when they have an event or something, it's not regular. I went there both times on the Saturday morning, no one was there.
Really?
I, the only best contact thing that I can think of is that I can message them on Facebook. But it's a friends of the circle commission account is the closest thing I could find. The only thing that I really, I mean, I have a picture of what their time cap, a pretty decent picture. The only benefit for me to go there was to get better pictures and maybe ask how they did it. But the picture I have is good enough that if we zoom in, we can, oh yeah, figure it out. So I don't know if there's an essential burning need to really go there, but I mean.
Just have the conversation with them. I do know that.
John Larson.
One of the volunteers there, is it John Larson?
He's also a historical commissioner.
Yeah, and I don't know what his wife's name is.
Mary Beth.
Mary Beth. There was some illness, so if they didn't have enough volunteers, they weren't open.
I mean, this is, in the past month, I would say.
Yeah, yeah. So I can check with Mary Beth. I can reach out to her through my genealogy group. Okay. And I have something for the time capsule. It's the article on the teacher when she got her award.
Well, that's good to have.
Can we have like an original, like copy of Tony Gazette?
Sure, gee.
I don't know.
Should get reached out to the Gazette, they can probably.
I think I might have the original. Because sometimes I do them for the society, so I can reverse it, give you the original and give them the copy.
Because the Tottenham Gazette isn't in Tottenham anymore.
St. Paul River.
What?
Oh, I didn't know that.
Really?
Were they?
So you want me to?
What would that be?
That'd be a good one.
Yeah, so you want the original?
Better.
All right, I'll get you the original. I thought that was pretty.
You always want the original.
At this point, it'd be a copied original because you can't have an original.
I cut it out of the paper.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
It's a copy of the original.
Yeah. Or I can go on, though I did look online and their archive files only go back so far because I tried to find it. But I think. Might be able to get it through the, not our library, but either Somerset or Cotton. They have them. All right. Anything else? We'll just keep working on it and I'll keep collecting.
Well, I was mulling over the idea, what about, rather, instead of, well, besides documents and, you know, paper articles and whatnot, what about like, it would also depend on the technology, like 50 years from now. Like a USB with all videos of some of the interviews that we're doing and stuff and everything. Like, I don't know, YouTube videos of senior weeks of Dyson, people vlogging, whatever. You know, and stored in that USB to be shown to future Dytonians 50 years from now.
Oh, that's what that would look like.
I thought that too, the thing is like a hard copy, that's never gonna go out of fashion. Like a, like, you know, I mean, obviously the quality, but if it gets preserved and everything like that, but like, this will look like this 50 years from now, I mean faded, but like a USB drive, you might, like, we have, like, you have to go to, not Circuit City, it doesn't exist anymore, but, like, you might have to go to Amazon and buy something that you could transfer a USB to.
Fifty years from now.
Fifty years from now, but like hard copy paper, that's, you don't, you don't need to.
You don't need to still buy floppies on Amazon if you really want them, you know, they got everything.
I mean, you probably do, but does the average person even have a computer that you can put a floppy into nowadays?
No.
I don't. I mean, I know, I know where, you know, I know.
I'm just saying that technology's still out there, so we put a USB with a lot of files on there for the future. There's probably someone techy enough, oh yeah, I got an old device at home and I open that up.
Daddy, what's a USB?
Yeah, that's exactly.
Anybody want to follow up with their iPhone to be buried in the time capsule?
I have like a couple miles ago, but.
I have my iPhone 3.
You do not, really?
Yeah, I still did in 2000.
How far are you going back on the date of that with the time capsule? What's the beginning date?
Whenever.
Didn't we decide from 23, 24?
Yeah, yeah.
I was thinking an old telephone, a land telephone, throw that in there.
That's another thing. It's happening from 2023, 2024.
No, it could be something. Presents, because it's really, we started it for the 50 years of the commission.
Exactly.
Anything within the 50 years of.
Yeah, exactly.
And like a landline is, like, people aren't gonna know what that is.
An actual landline phone? Anybody still use that?
I go to Yads, see if I can pick one up.
Yeah.
They're always out there.
Well, it has to be from Dyson though.
Oh, from Dyson.
I'm sure they're Dytonians who are still using landline, hello.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, everybody, just keep looking at these Yads.
Analog TV, that's really.
I mean, I think.
Did you use that in Dyson? Because if you did, I'm not buying it.
I was born in, I was born in 92 and my youngest brother was born in 97. My middle brother, 94. Myself and the one born in 94 remember our parents having to say, get off the computer, I need to make a phone call. But my brother, my brother, my brother, 97 though, no clue what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Like already, like, you know, have, it wasn't like, oh, that sounds to me like no clue.
I remember wrapping myself around the cord.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Aggressively hanging up the phone, but.
When we were, we had a party line.
Yeah.
So you had to.
Party lines, three people.
The neighbor had to get, you know, like, yeah, get off the phone. Yeah, you need to get off the phone now.
Do you remember, you know, when you had your kids and they were called out of state? And it used to be an operator would call you right back, hey, I just followed you, no, somebody in your house has made a long distance phone call. There was good like that years back in the 80s.
I was grounded for a month because of a long distance phone call to Rhode Island.
So I'm gonna ask, what do they consider long distance?
Rhode Island.
Or anything out of your dialing area.
Yes. Anything out of the 500 way for us.
Like the police out there.
Back then, when it was eight hundred and something dollars in long distance, oh yeah, I was in a lot of trouble.
Collect calls, yeah. That's fine.
Well, what a nice segue into preserving memories.
I think we should definitely consider like an analog phone.
Put that on my list and look around.
Cell phones.
Right, because the preserving memories you want to keep with Dyson related, but the time capsule not necessarily. It's more things of the time, not necessarily Dyson itself.
Yeah, because we would have used anything like a landline, you would have used in Dyson, you would have used, you know.
That's true. So that would belong to museum or like it.
Answer machine. An answering machine, yeah.
Oh my God.
So should you limit just.
Getting home, seeing the red light blinking.
So the time, the time capsule should be just limited to just paper stuff, paper documents?
No, I think we have.
Well, not if we do the way that we, the Somerset.
Somerset, you have more room for that.
I didn't see any other, I didn't see any non-paper stuff there, all paper.
Oh, I did.
Did you? I don't remember. Maybe pens, knives, or?
We'll take, we have.
Letter openers.
We have our historical commission pens, we have the crayons, we have. We have an extra like of the coin.
So right here, Rafa, that's how much stuff.
The Dyson coin. Yeah, we, we have an, yeah, like one that would have been sold, yeah, we have, right, the extra, yeah. So that would be, yeah.
So keep, and keep in mind, that's all, the whole, the wooden, the wooden part is not, but everything is, it's a Plexiglas front. So it's not, you can see inside, it's like a, you can see inside, but you can't access it.
What kind of items on the bottom of that?
I don't know.
It's, I mean, it's, so like, they're kind of, some things are wrapped up, some things aren't, you know, it's like.
Interesting. Very good picture.
I mean, in here, yes, you kind of limited a paper unless you have a, you know, an envelope like that. You might have, you might have something stuffed inside that envelope, but for the most part, you're looking at, I mean, these are like letterboxes. You know, like, you can't fit much in there, but if you stuff like a T-shirt in like a bag and stuff it in there, that would work, you know what I mean?
But I think, I don't know, my issue with that one, when it's exposed, people are always tempted to maybe steal it or to pry open it, you know, nobody's watching.
Do you think?
If they see something.
You think this is a library, someone's gonna be tempted in Dyson to steal something?
Unless you, you know, put a big Plexiglas and screw the Plex.
That's what I was just.
That's what that is, I mean, yeah, I mean.
You really have to work at it, make a lot of noise.
I'm thinking of those cabinets that are over in the segregated schoolhouse, they don't have any shelves. But those were at the Aggie School and they had them with their taxidermy animals and stuff in, in the museum.
Oh.
So I'm not sure, we'd have to look at those, but that might be a possibility.
That's a good idea.
What about the shelves that came from the Bowen House?
The shelves that came, the, the big desk thing?
I think it was like a wall unit, I don't know what you're talking about, the big desk thing. But remember there were some drawers on the bottom and drawer fronts got.
Is missing, yeah.
Missing.
There was that big thing with the.
Two roads at one stone, so you got this historic thing from the Bowen House that you want to preserve. Put some, put your crap inside and put your Plexiglas on the outside, boom, you're done.
I mean, I even have a roll top desk that my parents got at an unfinished furniture place forever. In like the 1980s, I mean, I can't imagine something like that, it's unfinished, but I mean, like, I can't imagine something like that would be too expensive.
So we have a lot of possibilities of things that we can use, because that desk with the drawers actually has the other top, you know, in the schoolhouse where the lights are all sitting?
I haven't been in.
That's like the shelves and I think that goes on top of that, those drawers.
Would you say it's like that size?
Bigger. Bigger than that.
We need to take it back to work.
You reminded me of this picture.
That's what they did, I mean, I, I mean, it's possible someone built that, but it looks like, I mean, it's finished.
Something in the house or something.
Probably, yeah.
Repurposed.
I mean, even those like letterbox shelves, I don't know if they modified it or if that was an actual thing that was in an office somewhere.
Right. Okay, I think whatever we can collect, that either the residents of Dyson would have used or as a memory, you know, like the newspaper articles. You know, the videos, even if you get a video of, you know, say like the, Firecracker Festival, you know, things like that, you know, you could put in, because I know cable has some of those things.
Yeah, I think I filmed the last Firecracker one, so.
You know what would be a good idea? If we put in there a digital picture frame turned off with the plug. So when they open it and they plug it in, it just.
That's a good idea.
I have one in my kitchen, that's just like, it's a, there's an SD card, right, it's SD card inside, but like.
It has the picture.
The other thing I was thinking of too, I can get a whole Ron or Connor, he's a photographer for Dyson. Probably get some pictures like the Red and White Mark, Neil, uh, Mark.
I have that he took, yeah.
Yeah.
He took that, yeah. He took that.
Let me check with Ron. Yeah, that can be put in, that'd be.
Definitely.
You want to check with Ron?
Yeah, I'll do that, I'll put it to do for me.
Okay. Are we good on the time capsule?
Yep.
So should I advertise again on our Facebook page, soliciting for donations for the last 50 years?
Until there's like a place we're gonna be and they can bring them to us.
Okay.
You know, rather, because they don't know where to drop them off or bring them, then.
Do we have room in the vault?
Funny era, right?
We just got all those books back.
Oh, that are, oh, that are done?
Yeah, and so we barely had room to put those, the red ones out there.
Made room for those.
In our section of the vault or the vault in general?
The vault. Yeah, yeah, already late. But we're gonna, after elections, Pat and I are gonna go through everything and organize our section. Yeah, yeah. We have our section that we did inventory and what's left to do there is to put labels on some of the boxes and maybe add some more boxes there. Because we do have items that belong to the Historical Commission in the vault. And just before COVID started, we had worked on inventory and everything. So I.
That was fun, that was a fun experience.
Yeah, yeah, there was a lot of interesting items. I mean, some of them, we could probably bring out and maybe display in the.
That'd be nice, yeah.
There.
Yeah, people want to see it.
I'm glad those books are back though. Yeah, yeah, I actually used the new ones today to look up a birth from 1932. So that was cool.
Oh, cool.
Okay, preserving memories, Zach.
I met with Mike today and I showed him the rough draft of the release form. He had a lot of great input, nothing shocking or anything, but she wants me to edit after what we talked about today. I'm gonna send it back to him, he'll look it over and then once he says good to go, I'll bring it before the board to go on the, well, to accept the final copy. Nothing within the release form makes him think that we need to reach out for legal to look at it. He was more than fine with what was already there. I mean, I took what was done from a lot of samples and compiled it. But, yeah, so that won't require any kind of reaching out to any third parties or anything like that, so I would say.
Okay.
If you think it's something that needs a vote, you know, by the March meeting, I'll definitely have it, but I mean, based on the edits that he gave me today, I could have the final copy done within a week and any email to everybody. So if you think that's something that you want to wait to bring before a meeting, I'll definitely have it before, I mean, before March, but I can have it way, I can have it at the end of the week if you're fine with it being done through email and you, and even you just saying, yeah, good to go, but if you think it needs an actual vote, then.
We haven't really voted on the release form at all, so it probably should come for, in front of the board.
I mean, Mike didn't say, yes, it needed to go before a vote, either, either way, but if you wanted it to, I mean, we'll definitely have it, definitely have it done for March.
Yeah, if you have it ready and then, you know, send it out and people can review it.
Ahead of time.
And just vote it March, because March, I mean, March 12th and that's not that far away really. You know, so.
Something that, I remember we had something, some discussions for zoning through email. And this is something that I'm gonna actually allude to something I'll get to in a second, but even if it's through email, if it's a quorum, I don't.
You can't, you can't do anything on email, you know? Because it violates the open meeting law.
Even if it's a record of it?
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, that's why when an email's sent, if you're gonna respond, you should just respond to the sender.
That's what happened for zoning, we had some, we had someone who hit reply all, I'm like, no, what are you doing, what are you doing?
So because, yeah.
A genuine accident, but I was like, oh no.
Yeah, because, so, you know, you can't really do anything through email, you can send it and if someone has a question, they can ask you the question. Reply just to you.
To one person, right. Don't, don't hit reply all, yeah.
Right.
And then we got to the technology discussion of the, the wording that we were going to go before the select, that's gonna go before the selectmen. Him and I kind of, that kind of, we did go over all that today. So anything that requires, like, he was fine with us as a board making a Google Drive account.
Okay.
So 15 gigs of storage is free. And then 100 gigs of storage is a dollar ninety-nine a month. Which, I mean, if we were to include audio and video, the 15 gig would probably not get full until we had 20 plus audio and video files. We're not, I mean, I have one, I'm not even close to touching the 15 gig yet. So I asked him, you know, if, if we do this, you know, does it go before the selectmen? And he said, no. He said, if I make a, or we, I, we as a board make a dinosaur commission at gmail.com, because it has to, you create an email address when you make a Google Drive account.
Right.
He said, that's fine, he has no problem with us doing that. I said, I'll even give him the password and everything, just so it's, you know, like, it's not anything that we're hiding. I said, about the storage size, he said, well, hopefully with, with cable, any kind of audio and visual stuff will get answered through them. But the, having a Google Drive account is perfect for uploading the, so I could upload the documents to the Google Drive. My issue was like, you know, I don't want to interview someone tomorrow and do, where would I put that information? And he agreed that it wouldn't be best to put it on my private, on my personal computer just for this. You know, I mean, I didn't care if I had to, but he said it probably wouldn't be the best idea, so I said, so Mike, I can't really do anything until I have a place to put this. And I said, I have to wait for the selectmen to address the technology thing for each board. Is that gonna be done in April? Like, I mean, I can't, I, I don't want to, the board wants to wait that long.
No.
So I said, but I, I slash, we need to do something in the meantime. So I said, can I make a, you know, Google, he said, absolutely, he said, go for it. He had no problem with us doing that. He said, the only issue was that if, let's say I was to upload a rough draft of the question or something. And then Pat went into it, a minute later, and made edits on it. And then Rafa went in a minute later and made edits. That's where the whole quorum starts going into play, because you have three board members working on something for the town without a posted meeting.
Right.
So he said, as long as you're not like, and I said, I said, I said, Mike, I said, I don't think that three people are gonna be actively working on a document. It's, this is more a place for us to throw things, a one-stop shop for us to go to. And he said, that's totally wrong.
All right, so we'd have to make a Gmail account.
To use, I mean, he, he said Google Drive, he didn't say, no, you can't use Outlook, he didn't say, no, you can't use XYZ, he just said Google Drive. I really don't care, I mean, I'm very proficient with both of them, I do not care which one that we go with. But we could, the address would be, like, it wouldn't be a dot gov email address, it would be, you know, be a Gmail one. It'd be purely for this, it wouldn't, the email address wouldn't even be a way for us to communicate with. It's just a login name for the, for the Google Drive account, really.
Right.
It's all, it's all that that is.
Yeah.
Google's a lot easier to deal with than Outlook. They could drive space.
Oh, yeah, a hundred, a hundred percent, yeah. I mean, I, I have, I have both that I've used in the past.
To add on to that, I did, I'm waiting for a callback from the, the tech here and Chris. Because Leanne told me there might be some drive space to put stuff on, but I know when you start putting video and audio files, they started ending up the, I don't know how much drive space they have, but according to Leanne, there should be a lot. So I'm waiting for Chris to get back to me and see how much drive space is out there.
I guess he was, he was gonna reach out to you about that and I said, did we, it's already kind of been discussed at a meeting, but I mean, I don't know how much Dave knows exactly about the space, but I mean, so he, he said, so he said, hopefully we'll get an answer about the audio and visual stuff. But in the meantime, him giving us the okay to do a Google Drive account for, for just like text or pictures or anything like that.
Right.
That's, that's huge, I mean, that's, that's a huge step forward, I mean.
And just to add on, the research I did too, if we want to pick up a backup, just to make sure we preserve that.
Okay, yeah.
Here's some prices, you could just pass this, we don't have to buy anything, it just gives you an idea what's out there.
Oh, those are the external hard drives.
So cheap compared to what you're speaking.
What's that?
So like, I remember the, the external hard drive that I have at home is, that's 50 gigs that I got in high school. It's terrible.
Terrible.
Was like ninety-nine dollars, remember my dad being like, I'll buy it, just pay me back every month, this is like, twenty years, no, but it's not. But like now, you can get one for twice the storage size and.
And if we did a drive like that, we could probably lock it up somewhere in the building. It can even be locked up a cable, because we're dealing with video all the time, we can just put it on the shelf and label, you know?
But I mean, and even like, you know, we could have a folder on the Google Drive for all the area files, for all the maps that we scan. It doesn't have to be just for this, he said, the only, the only thing you need to be careful about is if you have more than one, more than two people actively working on something. I said, Mike, I said, I said, I'm not gonna, that's not gonna, I said, like, I'm not, I'm not even worried about that, but it's a good to know, but I mean, it's, it's not, it's not, yes, there's such a thing as Google Workspace, but that's not what this is, I don't think that we'll be all of us actively working on a document. It's more of like a place to just put stuff without being like, oh, can you? all of us actively working on a document. It's more of like a place to just put stuff without being like, oh, can you email that to me? Or what, is that the most recent file? Or like, oh, I didn't attach it, or like, oh, I can't open it.
It's a paper trail.
Yeah.
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 I know, um which one is it? CPC, I think they use a Google Drive for their documents.
When, when I mentioned that to him, he made it face like I have no idea what other words do. Like, I started by saying when Carrie Easterday uploads the minutes or uploads the agenda from planning. I said, that's digitally stored somewhere. He's like, yep. I said, do you know where? Do you know how one acts like? He's like
Yeah, it's up there somewhere.
Pretty much what he said, he was kinda like, um, and I was like, okay, what if I did this? He goes, sure, go ahead. I said, do I need to go for the selectman? He's like, no.
Well, Kevin Spencer, they, they, with the new website, they put all sorts of documents up there. So there must be some sort of storage somewhere.
Well, exactly, that has to be, that has to be. But he's like, I don't, I don't know. It's like
And uh, one more thing to add for you, I went on a body, you know what a Yeti is?
Yeah.
It's for a podcast.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I'm gonna experiment with it. I mean, I bought it with my, with my cash, but I think if it works out, I wonder we use that for a one-on-one with, with somebody.
He was, he was very excited about when I mentioned the studio, I think because especially the time and money and finances that went into this. And I said, what if, I mean, like, for the oral history, some people might say, no, I don't want audio, I don't want video. Let's talk, you type it, that's it. You might have that. You might have someone that says, I'll go on TV, whatever you want. Some might say, hey, just do audio. And I said, could I upload the audio as a legitimate, can I create an Apple Podcast, like an Apple Podcast account for the preserving memories? And he was like, sure.
Yeah, put a thumbnail up there and let it just go.
He was like, that's fine, whatever you want.
Okay.
So, um
But I'll have that Yeti ready for you too. Now, going back, I know we jumped with one more thing, on the um, the studio's almost done. The problem is the lighting, when it's set for twenty percent, it feels like you're at a uh, the, the sun just glaring at you, it's so bright. So they're trying to adjust that.
But I mean, is it, is it in good enough condition that like you or I could go in there just to test it out? Or do you wanna wait till that's done?
Uh, waiting for some final tests, but we can start, um, we have to work the switcher, make sure the cameras are working. And as long as it take another week, and I think we're ready to go. The only problem I have is with the lighting. The lighting's coming in too strong. Even when we set it at twenty percent power, it's still, it looks like it's, everybody's like squinting almost.
Wow, really?
Yeah, we're trying to adjust that. But we got four chairs in there, we got a table, it looks very nice, looks very professional. It's small, but hey, at least we got a studio.
Yeah, he, I know Mike's really, really excited that.
Well, I was telling the guys, gotta make this work, because we're putting a lot of money at this and people wanna see something.
I think him and I were seventy-five percent through the conversation, he goes, wait, Dave, he's on the historical commission, right? And I was like, yes, Mike. Oh, wow. I, I kept, and he kept like, making notes for him, you know, like, I'm like, I'm gonna see him tonight.
I'm the only one. Where is the studio?
Oh, it's right near uh Estancia's, where the library is, with the kids' library. Yeah, from the side. You guys wanna see it, let me know.
Yes. So it's where it was before, just, it's just been redone, right? Because that's where, isn't that where it was before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think the Google Drive account, I mean, it, if you wanna do it all, I mean, I don't care who, who does it, but he said that's when, whenever, like, today, tomorrow, whenever, he said it doesn't need any kind of uh approval from the selectmen, just whenever.
Just for us, okay. Um, I think we'll have a motion to um have Zach set up a Google Drive account. Delegating.
That's right. I'll motion to make myself.
Make yourself.
I make a motion that Zach creates a uh Google Drive with the Historical Commission. Agree on a title to that.
Okay, so it'll be Dyton Historical Commission at gmail dot com?
Yep.
Oh, you know what? You might wanna add Dyton MA, because there is
Yeah.
Dyton MA Historical Commission at gmail dot com.
And when I do, I will email either everybody or you, the password and the login information. That's so we, we all have it, just so it's, you know, and then we'll have the uh for it.
Yeah, and, and then we might have to have a little lesson on Google Drive. Alright, so I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Alright, let's vote. All in favor? Post? Okay, it passes. Good.
So, once that's done, Mike approves the release forms, then I can get in, then I can start contacting people to set these up, because I didn't wanna do all that and then have it be like, I remember four weeks ago, I emailed you, like, um, I want all the pieces to be in place first. And that's so we can like, like, next week work, it's like, um, I don't know the suit's ready to be at, you know what I mean? So, but now that we have, I mean, him giving us the okay to have a place to store this up digitally for now was the biggest thing, and him approving the um uh, release form, so.
Right, so we'll have the um release form for March, for our March meeting.
Definitely, yeah.
Um, once you get those edits done, send everyone a copy so they can review it before the meeting. And that'll, that'll take care of those details. And then after that, you should be able to get started, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, do we need anything else to get started?
No, no.
Okay, that works. Excellent. Anyone have anything else to add to preserving memories or?
It's looking good.
Okay. Um, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, America's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, the first meeting is gonna be Monday, March fourth. Um, it's thirty here, and Tom Ferry has agreed to join the committee as the town department head. And he will be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. That's coming along. Um, the walking tour pamphlet, I shared it with Zach and he's putting it into Microsoft Publisher, right?
Yep, yep.
Um
And that's something I can upload to the Google Drive too.
Okay, so we have to find a picture of the Taunton Yacht Club. Um
The most I have is the old postcards, like, which are fine, but I mean, it's, it's the
Those are of the old yacht club that was close to the Dyton amusement park. So one of the Hurricanes took that down and then it, the yacht club actually moved, they bought the property that they're on now, and I'm not sure which hurricane that was. So, you know, the ones that are on, the one that's on the postcards, it's like the story one, that's the one that went down in a hurricane.
Yeah.
Um
I searched and searched and searched, I
I don't think there's because what's really historic there is the wharf. Because that was the Whitmarsh Wharf, the um Quorum Shipyard War. You know, so, unless we go out on a boat and take a picture of the wharf.
Well, actually, that
I wonder if the
What about the, uh, Mike said, I mentioned a drone that could, is that something that we can take pictures with? Like, take it out there and take a picture from that side?
Yeah.
The only other option is that driving over to the Berkeley side, finding somewhere that's not someone's private property, walking down through the woods or somewhere, I mean, on a, you know, map, Google Maps, you'd find somewhere, but to that waterfront, which I have no problem doing, but I think it'd be a lot easier with a drone.
Also to ask permission for private property.
Well, the drone, you don't need permission. Like, I mean
Some businesses, you have to.
Yeah.
Permission.
Um
To take pictures of it?
Yeah, this is what the D I C is doing that.
I have a contact at the yacht club I'll reach out to, um, Bob Bedard, he's the president of the group. If they have a picture that they can share with us. And if not, you know.
Is there someone around who would know enough what it looked like visually to have them draw like a, like a sketch of it? I'm trying to think of like, any kind of pictures of the Barney Shipyard in Swansea. There's no pictures. It's all like architect, like an artist rendering, like sketches, which, which look, I mean, they're kinda crude, um, crude, not crude, but like, kinda like, not too detailed or anything. But I mean, is there anybody around that had any clue of what it looked like or may have looked like? Just even, you know?
Not, when, not with the Quorum Shipyard, because, you know, they didn't have pictures and they, the Whitmarsh one, it was Charles Whitmarsh that owned it. I just haven't seen any pictures. I don't know anyone that would draw it.
A few uh drone shots of Titan on YouTube.
Yeah, and I, I've like gone to like Google, like Earth, and like changed the perspective and, you know, take a picture of which nothing, but I mean, I mean, a drone would be, you can, we can set the angle exactly how we want it and, and way, way, way better quality.
So let me, I'll reach out to Bob and see if they have some pictures of the wharf.
What's his name?
Bob Bedard. Bob Bedard, B E D A R D. Okay, um, so once it gets it, puts it in Microsoft Publisher, it's a much more detailed program than mine, uh, Microsoft Word, so it comes out a little better.
Yeah, and I found a template where it has like bleed marks, so it's like, okay, this is how big you wanna make it.
Yeah.
And that's, this is where, this is where they're gonna cut it to, to format the right way and everything, so
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot easier. I know exactly how much space to work with and everything like that, so
Because I had divided it into three columns and then, but as soon as I changed one thing, all the columns would shift on me.
Yeah, it's One thing I always talk to my mom was, I don't like about Word is that you're, it's not a blank free canvas where you can just like move things around, and you're very limited to like, you know, if you put pictures somewhere, all of a sudden you insert it, it's all like, it's
Yeah.
I, I hate Word. I hate Word. I really do, but um, yeah.
So maybe we'll have a, other than the picture for the yacht club, we're missing anything else.
No, no.
Alright, preservation planning, our working committee for the survey forms and recommendations. So we met and you all read the minutes, um, it was kind of a quick discussion. There were four of us there. And um it's all over the place a little bit.
Which we knew we were gonna find out.
But there's a lot of information to um really go through.
Hmm.
Uh, we decided, you know, we do need more information about understanding the criteria for the National Register of Historic Places. Um which I think I ha, I do have a thing from them. I have to find it. Then we also talked about, one of the recommendations was for the Architectural Preservation District or Multiple Property Listings. Zach had found information on the multiple property listings, which he had shared with us. And we can get, if people want copies of this printed, we can get that printed out for people. Um, I did bring copies from the three, oh, okay, yeah, good. So, um Sharon made copies for us of the Mount Hope and the School Street and Lincoln Avenue area forms that we'll be talking about on Thursday, for those that join us on Thursday. Um, Mount Hope has a huge amount of material in it, um and there's three for School Street, Mount Hope, and Lincoln Ave.
Nice job, thank you.
So
Okay, one more here for you.
So one of the things we talked about was this Architectural Preservation District and the Multiple Property Listing. I did reach out to Stacy um for, to see if she had more information on this. And she did email me back, and it is, that is part of um Multiple Property Listing is a National Register designation for properties that are part of a whole, but not necessarily located near each other. In the past, this older National Register dot not nomination sometimes included all of the historic sites in a city or town as a multiple property listing, but the National Register has gotten away from that unless the, the buildings are actually related. Um, I started very quickly to look at, because Stacy in one of, it was in the Mount Hope one, had referenced some other towns that are doing the architectural um district, I forget what you call it now. Talk about drawing a blank. Um, the Architectural Preservation District um to see if they had some information, but I just ran out of time to see how they're doing. I think one was Ipswich. I know it was Ipswich, because I saw that one.
Nothing like super local?
No, not that I could find. Um, so we have to kinda like look at that. These are an, alternatives of choosing, doing a local historic district. Um, so all of this stuff has to be done through bylaw too. So we talked about with Mount Hope, we decided to take a closer look at the Mount Hope area because it is so significant. In two thousand and three, um, it was done through the National Heritage, the Ha, Mand Heritage. Um, and at that time, it was recommended to be considered for a National Register, so
We did talk about that. Recommended to be considered. Like, not even like recommended to, recommend to maybe
So um, we decided Mount Hope is a very important area to Dyton, so we should really concentrate on Mount Hope first. It, because it is changing, it is, um, some parts of it have already disappeared and more could be disappearing.
Was that the only thing during that meeting that we thought would maybe require a vote?
We were going to
Something, something we talked about that I was like, we, we just got something, I think, I said, I said, should that go before a vote? And you said, yeah, probably. I think it was that?
For us to, a couple of things. One is, um, we talked about it being considered locally significant. And um, we did that with the Smith Memorial Hall to declare that local, um locally significant, as it just gives it some credence. It doesn't really do anything to protect it, but it means that is important to Dyton. So I found some definitions of locally significant. Dyton does have one that's in our demolition delay bylaw. A definition of significant building, and this is what we use when a building comes before us, you know, that is a hundred plus years old, and is being considered for demolition. Um so this is, the first one's in um our bylaw. Then the CPC, definition of historic resources, is what they use when they're looking at it. Um, and then of course, the National Register of Historic Places. So if we're considering something to be locally significant, we, I, we have to always be using the same criteria. Since this is uh already in our demolition delay bylaw, this is the criteria we should be using. It's a, it's very general, but we can
And I think that's one of the biggest things that we talked about at, at the meeting was, and I half made a joke that like, you drive by every town in Massachusetts and it says historic, or every town in America, historic Warren, historic Bristol, historic I said, what town isn't historic? I mean, like, like, it's like, so I said, I think the biggest thing needs to be historically relevant. Like, the relevant part is, is the, is the biggest thing, because I said how like, when you go over to San Diego or anywhere in California, the old, what they consider old houses nineteen eighties, nineteen, nineteen seventies. Here, an old house is nine, is a seventeen seventies. But if you go to Europe, they see our Harvard University and go, you think that's an old college? How about ours that was started in like the one thousand B.C. You know what I mean? So it's like, everything has, everything's old, everything has historic, but like
Right.
But, but the, um, right, the relevant part and the significant part is like, what, you know, what matters most?
Yeah, why does it make it?
Yesterday was historic, technically.
Right.
You know, you know what I mean? But like, is it, you know, just like, this was in the past, is it, I mean, every house in this town's historic? Unless it was built right now, like, it's like this second, it's already historic.
Yeah, because yesterday is history.
Right, exactly. Right, right.
Two seconds ago, we were talking about history.
Yeah.
Right. So I think what we have to do, because we have this significant building, that this has to be the basis of any kind of around relative, locally significant thing that we decide on. The relevant part of it, I think, is part of our job is to figure out, you know, what is the event? You know, the history, why is, you know, let's use the Segregated Schoolhouse for an example. Why is that locally significant? You know, it was a one-room schoolhouse um in the eighteen hundreds. Many of Dyton's residents went there, um, who were the teachers, you know, you have to decide the relevance of it. So, and I think that's kind of what we did when we looked at the Smith Memorial Hall to become the library, you know, why is this important to Dyton? Well, Anna Marie Smith, you know, was a Talbot, and the Talbot family is big in Dyton. She was very active in the community church. Her husband was from Newport and he built this house, this hall in his, her honor. You know, and then gave it to the church. That's relevant to Dyton's history. So you have to look That's relevant to Dayton's history. So you have to look at those kinds of things.
And like, I think, roughly, you made a good point, like the house where the kid was caught by the FBI for so like, for example, that house, let's say it was built in the eighties, is not sort of relevant, but what happened there was
Right.
versus let's say the 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 library, let's say it was just a library, maybe nothing significant happened there, but the architecture and when it was built, that makes it relevant. So it's like, it's not necessarily, oh, but it's old. It's like, okay, but what happened there? Um, nothing. Okay, so I just nothing is not enough, but like you have to really look at like, you know, but oh, it's too new, but that doesn't mean something historic didn't happen. I mean, something relevant didn't happen there just because it's a new newer. So like, you know, it's a lot of different things to consider.
So I think that's, you know, when you look at it, you we have to say, you know, is it on the National Register? Why is it on the National Register? Or was it associated with in Dayton? What if historic people are, you know, are related to this, you know, building this area, this artifacts? What was how is it important politically, economically, you know, social? So when you look at Mount Hope, you know, J.K. Melikan had a huge impact on the town with the development of Mount Hope Finishing Company and the development of the Mount Hope Village and the houses and then the relation to the Olmsted Brothers architectural firm. So I think when you do that, that's what you list. This building or this area is significant to Dayton and do the bullets, you know. So it's just it's probably a little bit more than just saying, yes, it's important to Dayton in the but we I think we we give the reasons why that really adds some validity to it.
It's the grayest black and white criteria. You know what I mean? It's listed up there pretty obvious, but discussing it and like, you know, the whys, that's what makes it gray. It's like there's I'm glad it's like we have a bullet checklist of like this, you know, is it relevant in X, Y, Z? It tells you what to consider, but like now actually discuss if it, you know, discuss it like
Yeah.
that's when that's when they get really tricky, not tricky, but that's when analysis takes place.
Right. And that's what that's what we should be doing to declare something locally significant because what's we consider locally significant is going to be different than what Berkeley considers locally significant to their town, you know, or the city of Taunton. So we had also talked about declaring the Mount Hope area as locally significant in Dayton's history. And, you know, take a vote on that. But having said that, you know, the working committee is recommending to vote the Mount Hope Finishing Company and Mount Hope Village as presented in this area form as locally significant. However, I think all of us need a chance to read through it and digest all of the information in there. I mean, I've spent some time reading it and I was like, wow.
Yeah.
There's it is because and I actually got out
And this is the tip of the iceberg. This is the movie trailer. This is even like, you know, I mean, this is
Right. This this is just a summary.
Right.
Yeah. So I actually sat with Dayton's G.I.S. map open on my computer as I was reading this so that I could take a look at the house when whatever address was mentioned, I could look at it and say, oh, okay, I know where that house is. I know what it is, you know, to help visually, you know, so I could pin it somewhere.
I brought my laptop and we hooked it up to the computer because that's exactly what she was saying, like they would mention an address and I'm like, I don't know where that is. But then you see on the map like, oh, that's what they're talking about or vice versa. You see, you go, I don't know what street that is. And it's like, oh,
That's something like I just got through reading Helen Lane's History of Dayton. And I'm trying to visualize with certain
Right.
I know where most of it is.
Yeah.
But she pinpoints a lot with Mount Hope that he, you know, had that little village. There was a hospital, the store.
Yeah.
The houses that he built, the company itself.
Right.
And then it went into what happened when they tried to unionize.
Right.
And I think after that, that's when the whole area just, he moved it to North Carolina.
Right.
A great way that we use that was there was the building that was a restaurant?
I just saw that in here. Yeah.
So so that's the thing that we were looking at on like, we were actually looking at it on the, you know, on the Google Maps. Not not even a map, but it was a Google Maps and seeing the at the house number above the house and being like like, so like, it's a building that like, it's technically on two streets. So one part of the parcel has frontage on Mount Hope Street and the other had it on
Springs.
Right. So then it was like, so what? So that's two different house numbers on one parcel. Which one exactly was the restaurant? So going on to the the satellite view and then doing a street view to look at it, that was really, really helpful.
So in the area form, there is a reference to Flickr, which is the Olmsted Brothers maps and drawings when they were doing North Dayton. And one of the drawings is where the cafeteria, I forget what it was cafeteria, and I was looking at those. It's amazing. Because they and they also have on this Olmsted Brothers website, the Flickr pictures, these the drawings of the plantings that they were planning for North Dayton.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's 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 a big rabbit hole. So I think we should take our time and read it both through this and March, we can discuss it some more and at that time, take a vote as to whether we want it to be locally, to declare it locally significant. Also, within, as we just discussed this, you'd also start thinking about what questions we would have for Stacy regarding regarding her recommendations. Because she did say she would zoom in and she can either zoom into one of our special working meetings or into, you know, a regular meeting, but we should have our questions ready as to what we want to ask her.
Now, are you going to have a meeting on Thursday?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
There is just so much information to
We spent close to three hours on a general discussion.
Right.
On on like everything. So imagine, we might spend three hours talking about four lots. You know what I mean? So like, that's why it nothing can't be done in a regular meeting, but like, it's so I don't want to be tedious. That sounds negative, but it's so there's so much to look at and talk about.
And then what happens is you start talking about it and then you think of something related and and we actually
Which is what we did that night because we didn't really know where we were starting. You know, we didn't go into it being like, we're going to talk about Mount Hope. And then it's like, hey, we talked about our Altine. At least now we know going into this meeting, we're not going to talk about, you know, looking at one, you know, South Lake, we're talking about this, you know what I mean? So that's that's good that we kind of now have that narrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I will ask everyone to do it over the next couple of weeks and we'll discuss it as a group and take a vote for local significance in March.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Because as I read through it, I was like, wow. And also, if you go online to the Macris website, they have the old survey that was in 2003. Yeah, the old one, which this is an update to. And she does refer to it. Stacy does refer to it sometimes in here. So hers is much more detailed.
Are they going to be uploaded eventually to Macris?
Yeah, it's not yet. This one's not yet, but it will be.
Can you email it to us? Wow.
I didn't email it to you. Yeah. But Sharon made copies for us, so.
I'll put it on the Google Drive too.
Yeah. Hey. Any questions? Any more discussion? Are we good to get started on that?
Yeah, this is very good. Thank you for providing this. I pass these houses every day when I come home from work.
It's amazing. So it's and now like you drive by and you go, oh, I better drive.
That's why I go by his house now because I've been inside to see some
So now you're window peeping?
I mean, I wasn't going to say anything, but I remember that house. I drive by and look right into your window.
But I remember the house was cool. And now even when I drive by, it's like, it's amazing. It's like they have done so much to this piece of
Right.
When you learn, shut your blinds.
No, I want like
Light.
Yeah, the lights.
And I think as we go through this, I think when we're when we're settled on knowing this area form, well, we should invite the people from North Dayton to come in and talk about their homes, their feelings about their area, you know, I just think that would be a real exciting conversation to have.
I think it would be insight for us too. I mean, a lot of these things are like, I mean, history starts verbally, I mean, and orally, I mean, like a lot of what's in here came from people talking about it.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, so like what you know about your house? I mean, like, you've told people that is you going to find that written down? Not yet.
Right.
Not yet. But I mean, so if people might mention things that were like, I don't think we even knew that, you know what I mean?
Right. And I know I just did like the house genealogy on my mom's house. And so my mom's house is one of the houses that are mentioned in the South Dayton area form. And it's just a little snippet of information and a picture and all of that. And I had probably, I I spent hours doing it, but a good half hour talk on the people that lived there. And I could have done more, but I was like, I was presenting to my genealogy group and I was like, I had a deadline.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'd still be researching it.
So what's funny is that like, you know, the form for that house probably started like this.
Yeah.
But now it might be like that now because of one person knowing things that someone else said.
Right. And the good thing is I can take that information and put it on a continuation form and send it into the Mass Historical Commission. You know, so as we learn more about things, we can add to like this is not a, you know,
It's not a final form.
Right.
It's a working form.
Right, but that's for the future. So. All right. And so when we have a series of questions that we know we want to ask Stacy, that's when we'll invite her, I think. Because I thought about we talked about having her come and, you know, we'll ask her this and this. And I'm like, we better be really organized what we want to get the most out of the meeting.
Yeah, because she's getting paid for it.
Well, if she if she drives down here in person, we have to pay her just a compensation for her. I mean, she lives in Tommy. So it's 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 gas money, which is totally understandable. But if it's Zoom or or FaceTime or something, it's no cost.
Right.
But we don't want to, we don't want to waste her time either. It seems like, you know, here we are asking her to come. We're like, oh, what you would talk about? I don't know what you would talk about. You know what I mean? Like, you want to have our stuff.
Be ready.
Yeah.
So that leads into our continuation of the community wide survey. And she had sent a sample contact back and we've we've talked about this and I go back and forth. Do we want to continue this year with more survey forms? And I was thinking, well, we have a lot of information. Maybe we should. And then another side of me said, oh, we've got such a good start. We have other places that need to be done. Should we just do maybe ten? You know, and just keep the ball rolling so that at least it's updated somewhere and it doesn't stop growing like it did in the past. But then we were going to cost.
I was just gonna say, at what cost?
Right. So and that leads into, we've talked about our, we did a capital outlay five year plan. And we're now in what year four of it or going into year four of it. So we had said for FY twenty five that the capital outlay plan would be money for the architectural plans for the segregated schoolhouse. FY twenty four, we said it was going to be for the survey, which we didn't do. And of course, all of this is used in CPC funds or grants or whatever. It's not coming from our budget. And that was another thought I had. Oh, we should start building in probably in FY twenty six, at least to do one form or two forms a year. Say, because that's what the function of the Historical Commission is. So that was like how my thoughts go. So you you put in an extra thousand dollars into the budget to say, we're going to do two forms because right now they're three fifty. They could go up to four hundred, you know.
Our goal is to make the entire town of Dayton historical.
Correct. And our job is to preserve and document Dayton's history.
We don't do it.
So
Well, we're doing it, but the past commissions did not do it.
Right. So so that's where, you know, I have arguments with myself.
How is that? Who wins? Who wins? That's who I told you. Sitting here.
So, you know, so anyway, so FY twenty six is again, we put in in the five year plan is for more preservation for twenty five thousand dollars, saying that we would go for a grant. It's great to get the grant money from, you know, the state, but there's a lot of hoops that you have to go through for it. Is it just easier to continue and do just a little bit at a time? Or do we want to do a great big bite at a time? So those are my thoughts.
I mean, I remember when we were similar to how we were discussing what quote unquote district to start with. We went into that night thinking we were probably going to go with either Brick or South Dayton because we heard from the state that that was, oh, you're so close. You just need a few things to get this. We're like, oh, let's do it. But then we thought, wait, but what's most important and what areas in more need or in danger of? And we were like, Mount Hope. Like, no questions asked. So like, talking about that, it's like, is that something? Is that a way to utilize keeping Brick and South Dayton going because we're so close? Or do we think that we need more information on Mount Hope? I'm not saying I have an answer for that. I don't. We're asking you for an answer, but I mean, that's something to consider like, does that because we don't want what happened with self self, we don't want what originally happened with Mount Hope to happen to Brick and South Dayton. We're two years, a year and a half from now, we're like, oh, yeah, maybe it was full. Oh, so much has changed. Now we're screwed. You know what I mean? So like, it's almost like, is it good to keep those on the not back burner, but the side burner utilizing that?
I think the one for the for the brick area, yes, because that was a very definite recommendation, you know, to to pursue.
That was closer. That was more, yeah, that's true.
Yeah. So if we concentrate on like Mount Hope and really work on that at our next working meeting.
I think we should because I think Mount Hope is the least changed district, I think.
Right now. Yeah. We could also send in the area form as it is for the Mass Historical Commission to consider and see what they say for it.
For Mount Hope?
Yeah. Right now, I mean
Higher transfer for North Dayton to be considered local historic district.
That's a good one.
I mean, I we can certainly do that.
Especially if it's no cost. It's not like it's like, oh, well, you tried it once. Now we're not going to reconsider. I mean, it's not if it was like a one and done, like take a chance. And I would say maybe not. But I mean, if it's free and it's not going to hurt us.
Yeah. And if they come back, they may have suggestions as to what would help make it stronger like they did with South Dayton.
You're right. Right.
All right. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Have a good night.
If you're looking for anything, the library is doing another story thing like they did a lot last time. They did the mutiny with the Fall River
Yes.
shipping and then he's doing another one this Thursday.
Here, right?
Yeah.
On what?
Very entertaining. I forgot which subject, but he's he's quite the story.
Thursday, we're meeting.
Thursday.
Oh, here?
No.
Not here, but I mean
Well, Thursday is going to be at a Lions Club meeting, so.
So you won't be at our special work meeting. Okay.
No, unfortunately, no. So sorry.
That homework, great, by the way, this time the screen and everything, you know, you helped me set up everything. It was perfect.
Was it? Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, eventually we're going to try to get a Zoom station down there too. We're working on that. I talked to Mike today about that.
At the meeting. Well, like, you know, we're like, the the one down someone, I think you and someone, someone said a little bit downside to that is that there's no Zoom. But I said,
We can do Zoom.
You do it from your laptop. Yeah.
Yeah. The biggest thing was like, oh, there's no internet. I'm like, just use your phone hotspot. Like, that's there is no, there is no Wi-Fi. The only Wi-Fi that's there is a locked
Yeah.
Police station account.
I can get a hotspot from the library for Thursday night.
Well, there you go.
Do we need it?
Well, if we're going to share the screen or whatever, or do some, you know, G.I.S. maps and all that.
Oh, I'm thinking about contacting Stacy, but yeah, but yeah.
Yeah, I know. She planned this out, so I gotta meet her at seven thirty. Tech support for her. She's doing a Zoom meeting at home. She's all nervous. Yeah, I know. She planned this out, so I gotta meet her at seven thirty. Tech support for her. She's doing a Zoom meeting at home. She's all nervous. Yeah, the last thing Mike did say was, uh, the police station, that is a community room. Cause you know, some people would say, oh, no, that's not a community room. It is. I mean, they sold it out.
I was gonna say, the way it was built to be.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great room too.
I, yeah, I loved it, yeah.
Don't mean to take you off topic. Thank you.
Diego, I'll be in touch about checking out the, um, trying out the Yeti and stuff at the studio.
Yeah, no, it sounds good. I want to do that. And then we'll check out, I'm gonna see if I can get some hard drives too, just have them on hand.
Okay.
You know, for that. All right, good night, guys.
Good night. So, I'll entertain a motion to send the Mount Hope area form to the Mass Historical Commission for consideration for the National Register of Historic Places recommendation.
I'm not repeating it.
You hope.
I remember on Zonia was like, having to repeat these at once. I'm like, no, just say something.
Okay, I seconded it. And I re-seconded. All right, any further discussion on that? All in favor? Okay. So, do we want to continue the survey? Do we want to think about it till March? You know, what do you, what's your pleasure? I, I mean, you heard mine both sides.
Right now, what would you pick?
I don't know.
Really?
Me neither. I was trying, I was trying to tell myself in my head, right, think right, I can't, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to make it confident enough to say like.
How would you pick?
Because, because of the, because of the expense.
I think maybe we should just focus on what we already have.
Yeah, I think so.
Brick, South Dy, and Mount Hope. I think we should just focus. Because you get, you know, one thing done and then focus on other things coming. I don't know.
That's how the black hole. Because you like, you, you're narrow, you spend up to three more topics and then you add on four more. It's like, you, you've listed 10 things to do. You cross off half and one and you add on two more. It's like, well, you know, you, you, you never get anywhere like, you know, like that.
Irene, what do you think?
Probably focus on what we've got right now.
Okay, Pat?
Guess, guess too much work already.
She's arguing with herself over there.
No, I'm not. You have so much information on South Dayton and on North Dayton. You haven't touched the Wellington area.
Exactly.
Haven't touched it.
Exactly.
Does it have the significance of North Dayton? Is, does it have the people, the, the volume? No, it doesn't.
But it wasn't, was it on town?
But it was its own section. But I mean, how much of that you even get? You know, how much history are you really gonna learn about the Wellington area compared to
Right.
what you've already had? So if she were to, if she or whoever, if you wanted to do like a couple of onesie twosie kind of things, if you just focused on the Wellington area, just so it's touched upon. So I'm not saying you're not going to focus on these things and you, you have all this great information. You're not going to just throw it in a closet somewhere, but if you've got some more information about another area, that's it. I mean, it's South Dayton, North Dayton, or it's Wellington. That's it. So then you have it all to go in and scrutinize what you want to do.
At a later date, yeah.
That is my thought. See, I wasn't arguing with myself. I just knew it wasn't a popular answer.
No, no, it's not, it's not, it's not because I didn't, I, it hadn't occurred to me and I have to say, I agree.
I think I kind, I counted the properties. I counted the properties up in, in Wellington. There's probably like twenty-three years ago.
That's, that's, that's more, I thought, I thought, I thought you were gonna say twelve, I mean.
Yeah, really.
Wellington, Smith Street, you know, but we could say, do ten. Cause the ten would be the church, the graveyard. The biggies, the biggies that are up there. There's some walkers, there's some wheelers, you know, shakers, there's some movers. All right. I, I think I like that. I think that settles me, you know? Because there is some significant history there.
I hadn't thought of it, but going back to reading Helen's book, she talked about the Wellington area of that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the Wellington town actually was from where Centre Street, Kind Street, Middle Street.
And we've just done nothing.
Right.
That area, nothing.
I wish you had, I wish you had an index in here.
I have, there is an index.
There is an index you could buy.
What? You didn't know?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Where'd you get that?
The Index, uh, Historical Society has the index.
I think I, I got this like, maybe 10 years before they cared about it, at like a.
Mine is a high.
Not, not a yard sale, but like, at like a.
The original.
A strawberry festival or something.
Yeah, I bought, I have two.
The one I got took out from the library was at the Swansea Library and then they discarded it.
Really?
Really? So now I guess the library is letting that copy go out, because that's how I ended up.
The one that I have, first edition, was actually discarded by the Somerset Public Library.
Wow.
And was lucky to have found it.
That's crazy.
I found mine on eBay.
How dare.
I mean, this, this is a PDF work.
I think I bought mine here in town.
I, I have a, a light green one. That was the first, the first one. It has the map in it.
Yes.
And then they made a reprint that's a dark green. I have that one.
I think I got the light green copy.
And then.
Yeah, I picked that up.
Um, the Historical Society did a paperback. So the Historical Society has that on sale.
Yeah.
And also has.
Probably how I got it.
Yeah.
They, they have the index?
Yeah, yeah.
Share it, have a copy.
Do you want me to see if mine's got an index and I'll make a copy for you?
The index is in a little yellow book.
Oh, in a little yellow?
Yeah. It's, it's, I mean, I didn't know that it was separate.
Separate.
Yeah. Yeah.
So. What, what are they open?
I can get you one.
She has connections.
It should be required waiting for all Dayton elementary kids.
Yeah. Oh, my God, you never, they never get through it.
But you know.
Crazy.
It's, uh, it's, it's, it took me two days to go through that. I just.
She jumps all over the place, but maybe because I was interested in reading it.
In murder, watching some of that stuff.
It almost needs to be like, not, like, amended, but like, um.
Remember, she wrote that book when Google did not exist.
Yes.
I'm not criticizing you. I'm not, it's, it's, it's just.
There's also an update that Elaine Varley did to nineteen ninety-two from where, it's like nineteen sixty-two to nineteen ninety. The shower, yeah, the red one. It's red. It has a red cover.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah. Um, it's, it's very, written very differently, because Elaine just like bulleted from the town meetings and stuff.
And some of the areas, you know, for what we would look at are misspelled. Do great.
She did it right.
She copied it right from the original historic records.
Meeting records.
Yes.
Yeah.
And you know what? Those selectmen are no different.
Hey, that's my dad.
No, but I mean, going back through, because I've only been in Dayton a short time. I'm not, uh.
Politics don't change.
No, they don't. And it was funny, because it's like, oh, my God, I'm reading this. I said, they haven't changed.
One thing I just noticed that, it says that, there's a map on Dayton, insert.
Yeah, in the first, the first edition, there was a map.
I want first edition now.
I got mine from eBay. So, all right, getting back to the contract first. Stacy, I will do a draft of this.
For Wellington?
For Wellington, say, ten properties, and we would have to approach CPC for funding.
Okay.
The CPC, they meet in March, and so I can have that application for eligibility. They meet after our meeting, so we'll have that to review before the meeting. And I'll just let Kevin Smith know that, um, we're planning on doing this. So ten.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
When the time comes, pencil, pencil in Rich Gunther's name. Because he lives in the Wellington section. He's done a lot of extensive research on the Wellington, so he would be valuable to you if you want to talk to him.
Oh, yeah. And he's on the, um, two hundred and fiftieth committee.
Would he be a good person for the oral history?
Um, he's for Wellington area? Sure, sure. He's not elderly. He's not an elderly man. He's just very knowledgeable.
Very knowledgeable.
We actually talked about that at the last, at the working session. We got off topic and we're like, what's the quote-unquote criteria for being interviewed? And I said, to have a, you're preserving the memories of Dayton. I mean, like I said, we, I don't want to sell a gear, but like, so I think it was, who was it mentioned? The autistic, I think it was autistic? Autistic, the boy that we're talking about? Who knew a lot about the Mount Hope area?
Oh, no, no, no. Uh, he, uh, he's homeschooled. He's from, um, you mean the one that I know?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so he's not old, but if, if it has to do with, if it has to do with.
We know so much.
But like, usually we're thinking about, oh, someone who's like ninety-two, who's lived in Dayton since, since the, you know, since the forties or something. But like, if you're eighteen, but know more about one thing about Dayton that no one else knows about, it's, I don't think the criteria has to be an age number. I think it's, you know, so like.
Someone who has a passion for the history.
Yes.
And has researched out a lot like that gentleman you talked about.
Is that.
Right. No, this is focusing on the elders of Dayton, quote-unquote. That's a whole different story, but I mean, that's not, that's not.
Ways that you can do it, you know, so. Awesome. All right. So I will, um, do the draft for the contract. I'll let Stacy know we're working on it. Prepare that and the eligibility application for CPC. It should be able to go to, because it'd have to go to town meeting for funding through CPC. If not, the June meeting, it would be the, um, fall special meeting. But I think our timing's okay. And we've done this before through that. So, thank you, Pat. You helped resolve the issue I was having. Back and forth. I should have just called you, right, and Pat and Pat. All right, Historical Marker Program, Rafa.
I gave.
What happened?
I gave my, I showed my dad the product that we got and he echoed everything that I mentioned at the meeting about the, about the quality of that.
It was like hast.
What?
It was perturbed, disturbed, disappointed.
Yes, um, and he said, oh, do you want me to take this, um,
To Paul?
To Paul, to have him do something to it. And I, I said, you can and you can if you, if you want. I mean, I, I don't really, he's gonna have that one possibly shellacked or something. And I said, but if we're gonna have him do, do these going forward, you know, do we want, should he fix this one or just make a whole new one from scratch? So, I mean, but he's gonna, he's, said he's gonna show Paul and see what he, what he has about it. Did you, do you guys see it?
No.
It's something I, I would make in my.
I have, I have, I have no problem saying this. It, it's embarrassing, the amount of money and the, two things. The amount of money that it costs us as a board in town to, to, to have this done. And two, the amount of, that was being worked on before I joined the board. Weeks. It's a piece of wood that you could get from a, from Michael's unfinished. The varnish, the paint on it was on the back of it. Granted, it's going, it would be a side that's against the house, was like not even. And the wording was, I think it was literally.
It was vinyl.
Vinyl cricket stuck on letters.
Yeah.
To the, to the point that if I, if I took my thumb, like you could, like, looking at it from like here.
I was gonna ask if you made your stuff.
Exactly, yes. I made this stuff. That's exactly what that is.
And see, that's great for that.
I understand.
But, but this was a hundred fifty-something dollars. So from, from here, from here to here, I could see the air bubbles in between the stickers. And I, I said, I would literally, if I said, Dad, if I took my thumbnail and went like that, it would peel, it would start to peel off. So imagine this, you know, against the house, taking the, granted, it'd be covered possibly, but I mean.
That sign come from?
Sign around my random.
Which is sad, because I, I literally made the same thing, but on up and it cost.
Right.
Three dollar.
So like, if this was something that we knew, a friend of a friend goes, oh, I'll make something for you. And we're like, oh, my God, we paid, like, I would, but like, the fact that it took that long and that much money to do that, I was like, and my dad was like, yeah. He's like, I, I mean, again, and my dad has said this, he's not gonna say, oh, Paul will do it for free. He never said that or hasn't sinuated that, but he feels like we would get a much better quality product at.
So the lesson learned is that, thank goodness it wasn't, um, it's us and not a resident.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, think about that, but that's a very good point. That, that would be even more embarrassing, the fact that you're gonna ask a town, a citizen to bring it on. Yeah.
Because shame on them, taking that long and giving us that product for how.
I guarantee you, what happened was, it was, you received the project to begin with, kept putting it back, burned, kept forgetting about it, got by with other stuff. And the Rafa finally pushing on it, he was like, oh, I gotta get this done. And just something with. That's what I think. Because like, looking at it, there's no way that took that long to do. Like that, like, there's, there's no way that took weeks. There's no, there's no way.
So, we won't be using that vendor again.
Sorry, yes.
No, but I will send him a copy of this meeting. That's exactly what we think. Listen.
I don't think I'm saying it's, I'm just. That's not what I said. That's what you said.
So I don't know if you wanted to say that we weren't pleased with the.
Well, if he asks me what, what I think, I think I automatically.
Your way to, to.
No, I receive, after I pay, I, I automatically receive like a generated.
A setter.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, like five stars. I just ignored it. I didn't do anything.
That's why, I think that's worse than giving him a bad review. Cause giving him nothing, like.
You gave a one-star review to the other side. Did the first side make a remember?
You, you, you have one before this guy?
Yeah.
A different one, a Conan sign company. Length of time, I was waiting and waiting and it kept pushing me away, like whatever.
They never did.
And finally I said, you know, I'm gonna give you one star. And he argued with me and Google, like.
Really?
Ask you, sorry. He had five stars and it went down to four point eight because, because of a one star.
So your dad's gonna talk to Paul.
Correct.
And Paul will give us a prize, hopefully, on how to do, what to do.
If my dad asks me to tell Paul, are you, whatever we do going forward, do you want the same exact style? So.
Definitely, you want uniformity.
Yeah, yeah.
So those letters, for example, like, if he has a way to make them like a little more raised.
Yeah, yeah.
It's Caslon is the font. Caslon, C-A-S-L-O-N.
Beautiful. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that would help him to see others, because if he goes by.
I'd be more than happy to take down my sign from my house and show it to him.
Okay. If you can, if you can do that, so I can give it to my dad to give to Paul, that would be great.
Okay.
Where he just go to.
And then what happens is.
Just go to Paul directly.
Why does my, my dad currently has it? What, what, what do we do?
The one that was that we have.
So, uh, at that working session, they presented it, they didn't give it to me to give to my dad. He just brought it in to show us. And I said, I want to show my dad that as just one of his point of view as it, as a person and as a selectman who is asking towns to pay us to potentially pay for this going forward and what he thinks about that as a selectman. And that's when we talked about Paul and he said, oh, I'll take this and I'll bring this one to Paul to see if Paul can, because like, like I said, if you just like went like that, the letters are gonna peel off. So, if you're gonna bring it to Paul and possibly shellack it to at least preserve, like, to at least like, preserve what's there.
Seal it.
Yeah. So, which I'm surprised they didn't seal it anyways, because.
I know.
Right.
I was shocked.
Rafa, if you bring yours, you know, to Paul as, maybe when your dad goes.
Yeah, I would say, don't go to Paul yet, in case Paul's like, I don't even know what you're talking about. You know, I was like, let's wait.
So I would have taken down my sign and bring it Thursday.
Okay, perfect. Okay, good, okay.
All right. And then maybe it, when your dad goes, when Peter goes, you can let Rafa know and you can join him so that you can be part of the conversation, so Paul understands.
Watch my neighbors notice. What happened to sign?
Someone stole it.
Irene's gonna notice.
When I was driving by. They took back the marker.
Where your sign go, who is this? Stop calling me. You're gonna prank call him.
Okay. Next is the segregated schoolhouse. So FY25 is around the corner, um, our fiscal year. And this is our, we had put in, like we said earlier, the request for the architectural designs for the schoolhouse. I did email the town accountant and, um, the town administrator and said, um, you know, this, this was presented for the capital outlay. And that at their convenience, we could sit down to discuss it. So I just reviewed for myself the issues, as we all know. It needs a lot. It needs paint and de-letting. It's not ADA compliant.
Nope.
Needs restrooms, sewer connection.
I have a kitchenette, maybe.
It needs.
A kitchenette for our coffee and tea.
A kitchenette.
Not, I mean, it's on topic, but it's off topic. So weird not to get into the nitty-gritty that we did at the last meet, at the working session, but, you know, changes to a building and what that does to its qualifications to me. With the state, federal laws now requiring things to be ADA, require, uh, ADA compliant, requires modifications to historic buildings. Does that, and can, will the, will the state then say, ah, you made too many changes, like, but we had to put in rent. Like, you know, like, you, you know what I mean? Like, I mean.
I think there is, I think you have to look at the re. I think there is, I think you have to look at the rehab, um, Secretary of Interior's rehab. Of buildings coming to code and which. Is that what, I did go to one of those workshops and I do have some information.
Because if that's the case, then like, everything historic is not gonna be considered, I mean, to be qualified, it's like.
Right, well, if you look at what's going on with Smith Memorial Hall, so that has to be ADA compliant. So the things that are going on there is like the ramp. For um, to the main entrance for egress, the ramp to the, for the children's area. It also is including um, the addition of ADA compliant restrooms. Um, some of the doorways are being widened, so. But they're keeping the um.
Keeping the style.
The style, and they salvaged all of the molding and the frames and everything, so that that same wood will go right back up over the door. So when you're doing the rehab piece of it, it's like we're using what you can to keep the character. What do they call it? The integrity? The integrity, the historic integrity of the building. So you have to make it compliant. So yes, like. We have a ramp here on this historic.
Right, right.
It's on the side, so there are ways to do it, as long as it keeps the integrity, the historic integrity of the building. So that is, you know, that's, that is a concern for, you know, the his, uh, the schoolhouse. There's also the safety in the parking issue. There's no parking. It needs plaster, paint. I think the windows.
Unless the town decides to buy the post office next door.
And knock it down.
Knock it down, turn it to parking lot.
Cave's paradise.
Do we need two post offices?
No, we don't.
That's why, that's why I said it.
Two different zip codes.
I gotta prefer the old one, Main Street.
Do you?
Yeah.
I like, I like the little, uh, Main Street.
Yeah, me too.
Getting back to the schoolhouse, it needs a second egress if it's gonna be compliant, because there's only, well, it has two doors, but they're both on the. The front side, and I think one's blocked off, because that's where the original, where they put a bathroom in at one point, when I was at Girl Scouts, that's a long time ago. That's where the bathroom was. And of course, it needs a HVAC system.
It's gonna cost more than the Smith Memorial Hall to redo.
So tho- those are what I see the issues are. And we said that we would do the architectural design, and again, we said the funding would come through CPC grants. And there is a cultural facilities, um, grant through the Mass Cultural Council. Um, and I. I have to check the deadlines and stuff on that, but that is a possibility, if this is gonna go forward. Because we have our five thousand dollars in the gift account, and then we have our reliable CPC. Um, funding. And then one of the questions was to, um, the impact on our operating budget. Would be the maintenance and use expenses, if we're going to be the ones that do that. Now, foreign buying school in the whole bit. They actually have a Friends of Foreign Buying School that runs that. So.
You have to have a Friends instead of segregated school.
Yeah, and then the Friends of the Segregated School could do fundraising.
You know what? Well, we don't, we already have the Segregated Schoolhouse Facebook page. I can just change the name to Friends of the Segregated Schoolhouse.
Yeah.
We can do that, then we'll start.
So.
A lot of friends.
It's one of the issues, you know, everyone wants to see it. Preserve, or people wanna see it preserved, but who's gonna step up to the plate to help do that?
The richest person, like, you know.
Loops, probably.
The richest resident, who?
Loops, G. Loops, my guess.
Maybe we can invite him.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not, it's my guess.
If we can entice him to sponsor for the preparations, we we have entire schoolhouse, and then maybe. Build a nice little wall with his name on it, like, it's a bathroom.
That's not a bad idea.
You can do.
The Loops bathroom. We had the Loops, the Loops baseball field, the Loops bathroom.
But you, you can do all of that, but that is so far ahead of where we are, because.
We can sell bricks with people's names inscribed on each of them.
And put them like a walkway, like what they did with the fire.
That's so far ahead of where you.
We're gonna think in advance, Patty.
Have a plan. Of what this is gonna cost.
Money for what?
We have to have a plan of what this is gonna cost you, because when this went up to the um, town meeting. In two thousand, what, eighteen, two thousand seventeen, or is it two thousand eighteen?
Maybe two eighteen.
Because it was at the elementary school. The um, Historical Commission went up for money for the deletting and the.
Nobody.
Oh, that.
And it got broken down, because they couldn't explain what.
Oh, come on.
Because.
They couldn't explain, and I think that was also when Renner didn't show up.
Well, they, yeah, there was kind of left hold in the bag, but they couldn't explain like what else was needed and how much would the whole project cost?
The board, whose job is is to make these findings, went to the town meeting, asking the taxpayers for money, to vote on money. And they were asked why, and they said, I don't know.
That's exactly what happened. I sat there through the discussion.
Yeah, we were naive back then.
I wasn't on the commission. I had to keep elbowing my husband to keep his mouth shut.
I can't vote for this, because.
I mean, I agree.
I don't know what else it's gonna cost, what the, I didn't, they, like, what the goal is, why do you wanna preserve, you know? The how, the why, why is it important? None of those questions were.
That's, that's.
So as we go forward with this, if you're, if we're talking about this, we have to be able to answer those questions. And we did do a statement a while back. Um, Jonathan worked on it, mission statement. Yeah.
We talked about that.
And I saw that the other day, and I meant to bring that, and I did not. I'm sorry. Um, again, you know, we'd have to, we'd have to do.
Does that uniform? Does that uniform from Stacy, we know?
Yeah, so we have more information, like as far as the history of it, you know, but we actually. And part of the, doing the architectural plans would give us, when I talked to Mike about this. Years ago, was to formulate what is actually feasible to do, because what is feasible to do there is what's important.
That, that bold my mind. I mean, that's kind of like when I first joined the board, and I. Asked you why the Mount Hope wasn't, you know, a more.
It just wasn't.
A more certified, a more, uh. Name, the district, and you said, oh, well, the boards before us just didn't do it. And I was like, it's simple, like, what? Like, this, I think, these, we're talking about is our number one priority as a circle commission.
Right.
I I I feel, and then the fact that boards in the past said, I don't know, and just didn't submit paperwork, it's, it's embarrassing, honestly.
I know, I know. So now we move forward, because we can't change.
No, 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 I'm just, that's the past.
It's, so. I'm not sure, because I know when they sent out the memo for um, all the financial stuff for the budgets and all of that, they said the capital outlay. Would would be discussed at a later point in time, so I'll just remind Mike that I need to talk to him about the capital outlay that. We have planned and and get in there to meet with him, so. Thing. I guess that's all we can do. But just FYI, or FY twenty-six, we did say another twenty-five K for. Another survey piece, but.
We'll use it.
We, we'll do something else, or, you know, who knows? Where we'll be then, so. There's no public here for public input.
Oh, one thing, I wanna say, I thought about this on the record. So, um, like I said about the Google Drive storage. Fifteen gigs, that was the free plan. Anything above that was literally a dollar ninety-nine a month.
Yep.
I mentioned to Mike today at that, at the meeting with him and I, that I have no problem paying for it, and I said, I'll even. Make something in writing saying that. I'm not gonna then say, oh, nope, I'm paying for it, it's mine, I'll consider a donation.
A donation.
So just so you know, for the record, that when and if we do feel like we need to upgrade the storage, I said, Mike, it's gonna be more complicated to like. Put a credit card in file, the town's credit card in file, like, is it, like, it'd be way too much. I said, Mike, it's a dollar nine a month. I said, I will literally just pay for it. I won't even notice it, and I said, but I'll make something said that it's a donation. I don't want it to be like, well, like, if you're paying for it, and you could argue that it's yours, because you're paying for it. I, he didn't say that. I thought that in my head, so when, if we get down to that.
So I would just.
So you know.
Yeah, put that in writing.
Yeah.
And then it's in the minutes or whatever, yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't think we're gonna even touch the fifteen, eighteen times, but hypothetically, when and if that happens.
Yeah, we just put that in writing, and then it'll be all set, so. Um, CPC didn't meet in February, so it'll be meeting in March. The Library Building Committee met on February twelfth, and we reviewed the proposed interior layout. That was approved by the trustees, and I just brought a copy of it. So it includes a circulation area. Some of this may change, because this is just like the first broad look at the areas. That they're going to be putting into Smith Memorial Hall. Mainly, it's the kinds of areas that they need, a general place where they're gonna be. There could be some switches, like with the circulation area. Because they were afraid of some bottlenecking with the entrance. The MMT Architects did a walkthrough on Friday with the um, library director. And the building inspector. So that they're gonna be working on it, and um, the next meeting is February twenty-six on Monday. Twenty-six, so if you wanted to take a look at that.
Did a lot change, do you feel like?
It's just more detailed than the, because the first plans done by Granite City, those were more conceptual.
Did someone do that on Legos? That's awesome.
The director used a Lego layout to give you a sense of how, this is like.
Oh, my God, I'm so excited right now.
That's like the main hall, to give you a sense of where, like, this would be the entrance. These are the book stacks. This is like where the computers would go, this is where the ramp up to the stage would go. And it just gave you this feeling like, oh, I can see that fitting.
So he had that in person at the, oh, my God, that's, that's such a good idea.
I mean, it really brought it to, you know, it's like, oh, I can see that now, and it actually fits more shelves.
Because when you're looking at it, it's two, two D drawing, it's like.
Yeah, yeah.
I hope he has kids. Because he must be a fun, he must be a fun dad.
I don't think he does, no, yes, so we'll have a. Yeah.
He likes to read these kids. Likes to read.
He, he actually brings a lot, you know, because he's done.
You knew him beforehand, right?
Yeah, yeah. So does anyone have anything else?
Uh, I have a question that was kind of stemmed off from the working session meeting, mainly because I asked Mike today if the Historical Commission. Had a logo or seal or emblem for me to put on any other preserving memories documents, and he said, no. He said, the only thing that we do have is the town seal, which I knew existed, and he said, to use it, you just gotta ask the town clerk.
Yes.
Um, do I have to?
In writing.
Okay, so I have two, so this, from the meeting that we had the other night, so which one is the right one? Because the one that's in this book. So that's the real one. Well, that's like.
I have, I have the straight ones.
That's the straight one, and the clouds are different. I mean, it's. Oh, yeah, so like, so like, look at, look at, look at. And that's not like, that's not a sketch of that. It's like, so let's see how the, the, the line of the shore, so sorry, so look at it that way.
With Mark's. Yeah.
Look at the line of the shore.
And actually. Writing is because you had it in writing, and it was perfect, because I don't want those people to call and say, hey, I need to write in writing.
So that's.
I can approve it.
There's adult room, there's children's room, two rooms, there's no adult.
The rooms that aren't. Plus, if you go into a library and say, where's the adult room? That's, you're gonna, you're gonna get. With your adult section?
Go to the basement.
Rafa, you're gonna put on, on Facebook, the library needs an adult room, what's that, what's he talking about?
Sax, do you want me to write the letter to Sharon?
Sure.
Just for the chair.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I don't care who does, I just didn't know how to do it, or, he, he said, just ask the town clerk, I was like, oh, Siri. Went, ask her like in person, he goes, oh, yeah, just admit something, I was like, submit.
Yeah, just, uh. Okay.
Just like, you know, if really, if you're looking at the release, look in the corner or something.
I'll have to find my draft and my letter that I wrote, or.
I have a draft of yours.
Send it to me.
Have you, have you or has anyone thought about the, creating a seal for the historical commission?
I think we should use the town, so we're a town committee.
Oh, right, sure.
Yeah, our own seal.
You know what? You're right, because anyone.
Our faces.
No one.
I'm sorry, I wish I could have a picture of her reaction to you and carry her own. Just like, I'm done with you, I don't wanna sit next to you anymore. But that's true, than any other towns that I've seen that have had their own seals, it's the historical societies that have their own towns, and their own seals, not their town boards.
No, for a town board, so.
All right, is there anything else? Then we are good. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On a chair, I should know that.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I could say.
Call in favor? All right, let's end. Oops, wait a minute, I.